Good evening. Welcome to the Ordinance Committee of the City Council. We're going to start with a public hearing on two items in ordinance. The first is ordinance amending zoning section 8.5 transit oriented districts. I'd like to ask those speaking in favor to come to the podium if they'd like to speak in favor. Okay, anybody wishing to speak against, please feel free to come up to the podium if you'd like to speak against. All right, and there's also sheets in the back for folks to sign in opposition or against as well for all items, but just wanted to mention it for this one as well. All right, if there are no comments on this particular item, we'll close the public hearing for, again, ordinance amending zoning section 8.5 transit oriented districts and come back at 6:35 PM for the next public hearing item. Okay, we're going to move on to order number 2025-068, order amending housing development zone and plan, also known as H-DIP. And this is the second public hearing we're having on this matter, but I'd still like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor to please come up to the podium. Good evening. If you could state your name and your address for the record.
Sure.
Thank you.
Maggie McKee, 117 Rossen Road. So several of the items on tonight's agenda are for new housing, but where is the affordable housing that will be needed even more in the coming years if the proposed 44% cuts to the federal housing budget go through? Why, with homelessness set to rise and less federal funding set to come into the city, would we ever consider giving a 20-year tax break towards a luxury development where the TJ Maxx and Dollar Tree now stand? Why would we propose selling the property at 1620 Hancock Street, which the city bought for $2.2 million, to a developer at a loss of hundreds of thousands of dollars? 28,000 families in the state live in federally funded public housing, with another 72,000 receiving federally funded rental assistance. And those numbers are dwarfed by the state's unmet need, with more than 300,000 people on the waiting list for public housing. At a recent panel of Massachusetts housing experts, Donna Brown Rigo of the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment officials said, "Cutting these programs by half, homelessness is going to go up. And the looming budget cuts could have wide-ranging ripple effects on the local economy. Landlords who depend on federally funded housing vouchers might have to foreclose on their mortgages. Banks might be unable to collect on their loans. Developers who count on vouchers to secure loans to fund affordable housing units might not be able to build them, which would in turn hurt the construction industry," said Joel Wool of the Boston Housing Authority, "which could be forced to cut 8,000 vouchers -- that's 8,000 families -- from its program. None of us are better off and none of us are safer if more of us are unhoused in our neighborhoods," said Mark Martinez of the Mass Law Reform Institute. Why am I bringing this up now? Because these discussions are happening all over the state, except from the looks of tonight's council agenda here in Quincy. Other cities in the state want to charge minor fees of less than 2% for high-end real estate sales to help fund affordable housing. But Quincy seems to be going in the opposite direction, giving money to developers of high-end housing. I urge you to vote against both this proposed tax break for the TJ Maxx lot and for the proposed fire sale of 1620 Hancock Street. Neither deal seems to be in the best interest of Quincy's residents.
Thanks. Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of this matter? We're going to go in favor and then against. Anybody wishing to speak in favor? Okay, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Kathy Thrun. I live on 234 Everett Street in Quincy. I'm here to ask you to please reconsider giving any more tax deals to developers. Tonight, we're going to consider buying, selling property low that we bought high. Further, we're going to consider more debt. I'd like to read you the S&amp;P Global Rating for 2025. Can you hear me okay? S&amp;P Global Rating revised the outlook to negative for Quincy, from stable and affirmed its AA long-term rating on Quincy. The outlook reflects the city's elevated debt burden and diminished budgetary flexibility following years of rising costs. If you can't listen to your constituents, then perhaps you should listen to Standard and Poor. How much more can we afford to give developers in terms of tax deals? Buying property high and selling it low, incurring yet more debt. It's not going to be good for the S&amp;P rating next year, believe me. Thank you.
Okay, and Jocelyn, before you come up, I just want to make sure you have enough time to speak. And we have a 6:40 public hearing scheduled for the next item. So during ordinance committee, when I open up the ordinance committee meeting, I am able to hold public hearings in that ordinance committee, even though it's not scheduled. And so I'm going to go ahead and make sure that we stay on the timeline that was published publicly. And then when I come back to ordinance committee, I can reopen or continue the public hearing in that way.
Public hearing, is that what you're saying?
No, no worries.
Do I get to speak or shall I sit down?
Later on, when I open up ordinance, yes. And then Chairman, you have the 6:40 PM, so I'll kick it over to you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Yang. So I'd like to call to order the Monday, June 16, 6:40, public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2025-078, grant of location, National Grid Verizon, Granite Street at Walter Hannan Parkway. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak, but would like your support or opposition to be recorded, please sign in on the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So anybody want to speak or oppose? Seeing none, I will close this public hearing at 6:41, and I'm going to go immediately into the 6:41 public hearing. I'd like to call the Monday, June 16, 6:41, public hearing to order. This public hearing is for Council Order 2025-079, grant of location, National Grid Verizon, Elm Street and Edward Street. And again, at this point, anybody wishing to speak in favor or opposition, please come to the podium. If you do not wish to speak, please sign the sheet on the table at the back of the chamber. So anybody wishing to speak in favor? Nope. So seeing none, I'm going to close this meeting at 6:42 and go right into the 6:42 public hearing, which is 2025-080, grant of location, National Grid Verizon, Quincy Ave and Faxon Park Road. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to come to the podium, state your name and address. If you do not wish to speak, but would like your support or opposition, please, on the back of the back table, you can fill out the sheet and it will be recorded. And again, seeing none, seeing no public comment, I will close the public hearing at 6:43. Thank you very much.
Just so folks know, so that folks know the order of things tonight, again, we have to stick to the meeting agenda as it was publicly published according to the time. And so the next public hearing opens at 6:45 PM for the order on the land disposition agreement. And so again, just being mindful of giving folks time to speak instead of squeezing it into two minutes. I'm going to hold and then go into the 6:45 PM public hearing and then go into ordinance committee and reopen the ordinance committee public hearing, okay? I know it's a little bit confusing, but again, I need to make sure to stick to the published schedule, okay? Okay, I'd like to open up the 6:45 PM order, I'm sorry, public hearing for order number 2025-074, land disposition agreement, 1620 Hancock Street. Anybody wishing to speak in favor of this order, please feel free to come up to the podium. Oh, yes. Go ahead, Mr. Walker.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Good evening, councilors. It's my pleasure this evening on behalf of Mayor Koch to testify in support and walk us all through the land disposition agreement for 1620 Hancock Street, marking the next step forward in our collaborative efforts to revitalize our historic downtown. Simply put, in all the years we've been doing this together, there hasn't been a more straightforward textbook example of the benefits of urban renewal and why we've had to engage in this kind of sweeping program to bring life back to the downtown than the agreement before you this evening. In the past, we've had some complicated transactions before this body. We've had some transactions with substantial public investment involved directly tied to them. We've had agreements with multiple parties and multiple moving parts. The proof of all those efforts of Mayor Koch, together with this body for the last 15 years, are fully evident just outside this window. The downtown of 15 to 20 years ago, which had suffered decades of stagnation and almost no growth, no longer exists, thanks to the work in large part due to this body over the last 15 years. A neighborhood that was once a drag on city resources and a net negative for city finances is today a growing, vibrant mix of businesses, homes, and the most thriving restaurant and bar scene anywhere outside of Boston. We've got plenty of work to do, but just a couple of numbers to show the progress we've made so far. Since we started redevelopment, assessments in the downtown have risen $370 million. $370 million in increased value in the downtown since we began this process. That is tens and millions of new tax revenue to the city of Quincy. Values have grown 351% on residential side and 50% on the commercial side, which is actually a pretty big number considering where we are with the market trends on the commercial sides. What's before the body tonight is not among the more complex of our redevelopment projects, and many members of this body will remember some of those over the past several years. The subject property located at 1620 Hancock Street is about 11,000 square feet and was severely damaged in a fire and left vacant and blighted for more than 20 years. There's probably no better example of why we've embarked on this process over the last decade and a half than 1620 Hancock Street. During all that time, the property owners took no action to reuse the building and took no action to make the property available to the open market, forcing the city in 2022 to use its eminent domain authority under urban renewal to take the property. It is truly one of the last vestiges of a downtown that pulled against progress for so long. Now, a couple of years later, with the adjacent property, what folks will remember as the Coleman's and Good Health Store came on the market, comes an opportunity to re-energize that block with a new development. It's instructive to look at this LDA as a purchase and sale agreement. Like any purchase and sale agreement, it sets a price and it details a set of conditions in which the trigger to the closing of the redevelopment and the real estate transaction will take place. I'll touch briefly on those two key elements and look forward to answering questions the council will have during committee deliberation. The first is the price. You'll note that the city took the property for slightly more than the price in this agreement, $2.2 million versus $1.9 million. While both sale prices were dictated by appraisals, there's a difference between an eminent domain appraisal and a development disposition appraisal, and that's the delta you see here. An eminent domain appraisal, the property owner, absentee landlord or not, is entitled to go to court for more money, projecting what may or may not ever happen on that property and raising the potential price tag to a level that probably would go beyond market, fair market value in some cases. That is why an eminent domain appraisal leans a little bit in that direction, to provide the protection to the city it needs so it can stand up in court and say, "No, we sold this property at the highest we possibly could," or "We bought this property at the price that we possibly could," and no further protections are needed for the landlord. The disposition appraisal, which is before this body tonight, which is the subject of the LDA, takes a little bit of a different path. It takes a path that there are certain conditions that are laid out now through this process that have to be in place for development to take place at this site. The developer has to meet all of the conditions set by our planning board process under the certificate of consistency process. They, under this case, there's no public parking will be available for this project. Those considerations all factor into the appraisal and the $1.9 million before this body tonight. Now, should anyone think that the city is somehow getting the short end of the stick on this, I want to make clear that right now, that vacant piece of property is generating no taxes. Three years ago, prior to it being taken by the city, and for 20-some-odd years being a blighted piece of property, it generated a grand total of $12,000 annually in taxes. Together with the adjacent property, the project that will be proposed eventually to the planning board will create $650,000 in annual taxes. That is the exact reason why we do urban renewal. That is the exact reason why we've been forced to take eminent domain authority. It's the exact reason why we've been successful in the downtown over the last 15 years, because we know there's the short term versus the long term. The short term is, well, you paid 2.2, you should get 2.2. The long term is, we provide the opportunity to the developer to create a tenfold increase in revenue to the city of Quincy. That's the price aspect. The second key element, and many of the members of this body are very familiar with, the conditions to which the city will come to a closing on the LDA. Within the document, I'll point you to several specific provisions that ensure the city's interests are protected. For example, for the city to close, sale must be approved by the state. This is a state process. Urban renewal is governed by the department formerly known as DHCD. I won't say the new name because I could never remember it. The developer must have approval through the planning department for a certificate of consistency, in line with the rules, regulations, and ordinances we've set up to foster this kind of development. So this body is not expected to vote on a project. This body is expected at some point to vote on providing the planning board the opportunity to hear the project and let the planning board and the engineers and the peer review and all of the things that are a part of the LDA process and the planning process take place, and that's a condition. So we don't close until we have a viable project. The developer must produce evidence that it has construction financing. We don't close until the developer shows up, shows us that they have financing to build the project they've been permitted to do. They must produce evidence that they've closed on the adjacent property to show that they have a viable project. So those conditions all have a second set of conditions to them, and that's the timing in which and the schedule in which they must take place. All of these things are tied to timelines within the LDA, which you'll see, which you have seen in the document. Closing conditions must be met one year from the date of state approval, with an outside date of December 31, 2027. So the developer has strict timelines that it must meet, otherwise the city has its rights protected and it can move on to a different developer. From 120 days from the date of that closing, 120 days to start construction. In 30 months from that starting construction date, the project must be done. Those are the conditions that will be met. Under each of those provisions you'll see in the LDA, there are triggers that revert the city's rights back to the city. There are repurchase rights in some cases. There are extension rights in some cases. But in any event, the city is well protected, that we'll have a timely project, well permitted, and ready to go in a timely fashion. I know this is the public hearing portion of the meeting, but when we get to ordinance, we do have the full downtown redevelopment team here with us tonight to answer any questions you may have from our outstanding planning department, Director Jim Fatsis, Rob Stevens, and Joe King, who have really, over the last these years, paved the way to make downtown redevelopment possible, working with developers individually on individual projects and making sure we get the biggest bang for our buck out of downtown redevelopment. We have Bill Geary, who's been special counsel to the mayor on downtown issues for quite some time, many years now. And prior to that, he was chairman of the planning board. So he's really been on ground level of downtown redevelopment since we started. We have Joe Shea from Grant Sydney Partners, another member of the team going back to day one. So there are few engineering minds and property knowledge-based than we do have, than we have in Grant Sydney Partners. And we do have a couple of new faces to the development team on the legal side. Brian Golden, some of you may know the name from, he was the head of the Boston Planning and Development Agency under Mayor Walsh. And he is now a partner at Keegan Wherland LLP, and he was assistants to us on this LDA. And with him together, Sean Nehill, also 16 years at the Boston Planning and Development Agency. He has joined our legal team. He's a partner at Greenberg Torg. With that, Madam Chairwoman, I hand it back over to you and look forward to the discussion at committee.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. So we're late to open up ordinance committee, so I'm going to continue to hold this public hearing as well to leave it open to discuss when we are able to in finance committee. So with that, I'm going to open the ordinance committee meeting at 6:50 PM. We do have to open finance at 7:00 PM, so I'm going to open ordinance, close it, open finance at 7:00, close that, reopen ordinance so we can continue that public hearing we were having for ordinance committee. So I'm going to go ahead and open up the ordinance committee meeting at 6:56 PM and then close it again for now, open finance, and then we'll come back to it. All right, so I'm going to open up the finance committee meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM and then recess it at 7:00 PM as well. And now I can go ahead and reopen the ordinance committee meeting scheduled for this evening. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash, Counselor Kane, Counselor Campbell.
Present.
Counselor Devine.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor McCott.
Counselor Lemon.
Chairman Liang. Present. Seven members of the board. Thank you. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. And so I'm going to go ahead and continue with the ordinance public hearing that we were having earlier on order number 2025-068, amending housing development zone and plan, Thank you for your patience.
Thank you. I don't understand any of it, but that's okay. I spoke before on the, at a public hearing on this same issue. I'm going, oh, I'm sorry.
This for the record?
Jocelyn Sedney, 85 Monroe Road here in Quincy. I spoke before at the public hearing on this issue, and I'm going to reiterate some of the things I said, but add to those comments as well. My first point before was that this is a program offered by the state for gateway cities, and it's to promote housing, market-rate housing, to promote housing in areas that otherwise would not be developed without the advantages offered by the state under this program. And I suggest to you that the project at issue, this luxury development, is not appropriate for this program. It's wrong to take advantage of the state benefits for this program. If you read the statute, there's limited money under this provision. By suggesting that we should take advantage of these state benefits for the Grossman family, we are disadvantaging truly gateway cities. There are many gateway cities that have been designated by the state. There are cities that we would recognize, Brockton, Revere, places like that, that should be able to take advantage of these programs. If we do wrongfully, the money won't be available for them. We are not a gateway city as defined by the statute. I have the statute here, and I said this before. A gateway city is defined by population, and we do have a population that complies with that. A gateway city is defined by whether or not the median household income is below the Commonwealth's average. A gateway city is a city that has a rate of educational attainment of a bachelor's degree or above that that is below the Commonwealth's average. We do have an educational attainment of bachelor's degrees that is above the state average. And a simple review on the internet will clearly demonstrate that that is the case. We are 10%, approximately 10% above the average in Massachusetts. So we don't qualify. Now, we have been designated as a gateway city in the past. Does that mean that we take advantage of benefits that we are not entitled to? And I say, no. Is this a moral question? I say, yes. If one of us qualifies for food stamps, and when I say food stamps, you can see how old I am because they're not called food stamps anymore, because our income is low and all of the sudden we get a job with a higher income, do we say to the state, "Stop, I don't need those benefits anymore"? Or do we simply continue to collect them until it comes time to make the routine disclosure to the state? The question is, do we take advantage of benefits to which we are not entitled? Is this Grossman project going to go forward without this tax benefit? Yes. When they presented their plan to the planning department, when they spoke about it publicly, they never said, "Oh, we need help from the Commonwealth. We need help from the state. We need help from Quincy for public infrastructure, for the residential component of this project." They never said that. And all of the sudden, Quincy proposes that we extend this special developmental area to a luxury development. Why? Two reasons. So the developer, the Grossman family, gets a tax break, a commercial tax break. We're residents here. It's time for each of you to stand up and advocate for the residents and not commercial developers. This is not a tax break that should be provided to the Grossman family. This project will go forward without this tax break. This project will go forward whether they can collect those tax credits under the state. Just go ahead and say, "No." It will go forward. We don't need it. They don't need it. It's disadvantageous to the residents, and it should not be approved. Now, you look at some of the things that I've heard after the last time we had this public hearing. We've heard, "Well, we need to stimulate economic development in this area." The project's going to go forward. It's a luxury development, not with commercial enterprises like TJ Maxx and the Dollar Store. It's going to be high-end. It's going to raise the level of the economic development in that neighborhood, which is what we heard from the Grossmans. We heard, "This is going to benefit everybody." It's not just something that, you know, we should be concerned about, that the Grossmans get a benefit. This is going to benefit all of us. When I open my tax bill, I am not going to see this as a benefit, and I suspect no tax bear in this city is going to consider that a benefit. It's certainly not a benefit that, or a detriment, that the Grossman family or the Grossman people who are involved in this project are going to feel. They don't live in Quincy. They live in places like Weston, Dover, Needham. We live here. You represent us. All of you represent us. It is time to stop the tax giveaway, and especially in a situation where it is morally wrong to do so. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak against? Again, anyone else wishing to speak against, please feel free to come up to the podium. Good evening. If you could state your name and your address for the record, please.
Yeah, my name is Stephen De Bishop. I live at 44 Wedgewood Street.
Thank you.
I mean, I don't have too much to say. I just think if they're not building affordable housing, I think it's absurd to give them a tax break. We all here pay our fair share. If someone who's building luxury housing can't afford to pay their fair share, I just don't understand that. I think it's absurd to be giving them a tax break for non-affordable housing. They've made no guarantee that they're going to do that, and as the person before me said, you know, they're going to go forward with the project whether they have this tax break or not. So I don't see any reason to offer it to them, and that's all I got to say, so.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against?
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Annalee Johnson, 36 Garfield Street in Quincy. I would like to join previous speaker, Attorney Sidney's comments regarding Grossman family. They are a well-regarded family. They have been good family. They have gained much from They are a well-regarded family, they have been good family, they have gained much from Quincy's, being in Quincy. They have been excellent in donating land when Lincoln Hancock School was built, and even a name on the street over in West Quincy, in my neighborhood, is named after the Grossman family. So it's, but now, this issue is truly a moral issue. Do we really give this well-regarded, very rich developer these benefits? And our own residential tax rates go up annually, not 2.5%, but 8% and 9%. And I am among the seniors all over the city, in the Kennedy Center and other places, and I speak to seniors similar to myself. They try to live in their own home, and they always keep on saying, "I love to live in Quincy, but my taxes keep on going up annually." And that's an issue that the council should really carefully consider, rather than giving multi-billionaire developers breaks. I know it sounds like a socialism, but this is a moral issue and nothing to do with, it's just your responsibility to look out for us as taxpayers. And so carefully consider when you grant these special provisions, and instead of extending these provisions that's available for homeowners, and as myself, appreciate you taking this under your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against?
Hi, my name is Geraldine McKay. I live at 447 Quincy Shore Drive. And I did a little research online, and I saw that last year when the Grossman companies gave their proposal for this development, the director of development, Avi Shosh, quote, said, "The project would improve the area's culinary, entertainment, and shopping options." And my question is, for whom? Right now, there's a Dollar Tree, there's a TJ Maxx. I shop those stores frequently, several times a week. Supposedly, and I don't know all of the details, I couldn't find any names of retail shops that are proposed to go in there, but I did read that they're high-end. And my question is, who's going to be shopping in those high-end stores? I'm a senior citizen on a fixed income, and they're taking away the stores that I shop in and a lot of other residents in Quincy shop in to put in shops that the renters who are going to be paying high exorbitant rents are going to be shopping in. Those renters are not taxpayers. I am a taxpayer. I was never asked what kind of shops I want to go in there to improve the area of the district. I'm very happy with TJ Maxx and the Dollar Tree store. And I also, if I needed a high-end boutique, which I don't, I would go to the Derby Street shops. And I also did a little looking up there. Hingham has the Derby Street shops, and from what I can gather, it appears that this is the type of shop that the Grossman companies want to put in this development. Well, the median household income in 2023 was $222,696. The median income for Quincy in 2023 was $95,711. We don't need high-end retail shops for the residents and taxpayers of Quincy. And if the renters in those high-luxury apartments want a high retail shop, they can go to the Derby Street shops where the income is $222,696. I saw no survey, I wasn't queried or questioned, I'm not aware of anyone else, and Quincy was. But the Grossman companies determined that they are going to improve the area's culinary, entertainment, and shopping options? Based on what? Based on whom? Based on their opinion? Well, their opinion is not the opinion of most of the Quincy shoppers. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against?
Good evening, Bill Zamsal, 46 Tilden Circle, Quincy. There are a variety of problems with this proposal, serious to fatal problems. First up, there are three criteria to get this sort of a proposal into place. Quincy only checks two or three. Also, there's a problem, this is a premium apartment building project with some retail. At most, what they're going to do for housing, which is the basis for this underlying tax credit program, is they're going to pay in lieu of fee for affordable housing to the Affordable Housing Trust. Alone, just this alone provides horrific optics. This is just unconscionable to go forward with that sort of a thing. Next up are the tax angles. Proposing to provide a tax break on a project that can still stand on its own without the break is providing a giveaway at taxpayers' expense. This tax break is further adverse to local taxpayers, as it caps future revenue to the general fund to basically the pre-development assessment plus 1% a year. All the additional revenue will go to paying down the greater downtown redevelopment debt. The problem with this is, every year, that assessed limit cap that goes to the general fund will become smaller in terms of actual value because of inflation. This doesn't benefit homeowners, and it benefits the redevelopment of downtown, which for the most part benefits developers. This is wrong. We also have the problem, last year, they came in and said, "Well, we got a little problem with the way the downtown's going, and we're going to accrue about a $25 million negative until around 2050 or thereabouts." Not sure about the exact date, last year. I'm old, I don't remember dates as well as I used to. The people that are going to have to pick that up are the homeowners, because they're going to have to cover that shortfall, because the debt's going to run into the negative until we get way out on the redevelopment to downtown. This project only adds to that problem. This is wrong, because homeowners are subsidizing a private development, and they're getting no piece of the action. You know, they'll talk up all the great and wonderful development for Quincy, but they don't get a piece of the action, but they're paying for it. That's wrong. By the way, I've looked at the 25 million, and I think that that number is low. I think that a negative's going to run more like 50 to 100 million or more, if you look at the way things are in a realistic set of cost accounting concerns. There are a couple more problems with this proposal. The administration's talked up a related tax break to see Whole Foods come to Quincy. Good luck with that. Whole Foods is still reigning in store count, and more importantly, Quincy is more prime for an Aldi, not a Whole Foods. Similar, there's been talk of Market Basket coming into town somewhere. This is a problem. First up, Market Basket is in the middle of another family food fight. And the other thing is, their business model is, they want to buy their sites. There isn't anything in Quincy that could accommodate a Market Basket store, and the only way that that could happen would be in eminent domain taking, and that proposes all sorts of problems, which people pointed out, or a problem with the 1600 block project on Hancock Street, no matter how they try to say it'll be wonderful and get it fixed. If it doesn't work on market value, then there's a problem. It just doesn't work. Now, let's be more realistic. Grossman's renovation for Granite Plaza, fine, great, let them put up apartments, let them do some retail. But the reality is, more likely, the space they're talking about for a grocery store is going to be to relocate to Star Market. That makes the most sense. That allows them to then go back in and figure out a way to redo Walgreens, the Walgreen, current Walgreens-Star parking lot footprint, and do it in a nice stage manner with the least disruption to the various businesses involved. That makes sense. The problem, then there's the other problem. The mayor let it slip that he's been discussing doing yet another parking, publicly financed parking garage to support Grossman's plans, and this just presents us with another city garage that at the end of the day is a net-net money loser until the construction debt is paid down 30 years down the road. If you look at the current Kilroy Garage, they're losing money hand over fist because they borrowed short-term when rates were 200 basis points, and now they're running about 4450. They're losing money, and they're only getting rent that covers about maybe half of the financing cost of that building, nothing towards operating costs. That thing is a money loser, no matter how you want to look at it. They could talk all kinds of differential sideways, provided the parking to do the restaurants and all that. The numbers don't work, folks. Trust me, they don't work. In short, I have no problem with Grossman redeveloping the two sites, but what the mayor's proposing is going to cost people, local homeowners, money, a lot of money. And for a final point, returning to Market Basket and Whole Foods. Both seek to be large draw area locations, as opposed to a more neighborhood shop like Star. Such doesn't work for Quincy. Getting around Quincy is bad enough locally, and oh, by the way, because they're right next to the water, that makes it bad to have property going that way to draw upon. How's next not going to feed us a Whole Foods? Trust me. Getting around in town is terrible. You can't come in and out. Whole Foods would need to draw from as far down as Hingham, parts of Boston, into Braintree, Milton. They're not going to come here. It's too hard to get in and out. And that's the same problem that basically killed Streetworks plans. Egress in and out of Quincy is terrible. There are only about six or seven major ways to do it, and they're not particularly wide. And they're only getting more congested because they're putting developments right on top of things. The project they just approved next to Common Market is going to be a nightmare. Simply put, Quincy is not going to ever be in Arlington, no matter how they try to talk it up. In fact, parity with Somerville would likely be a stretch, no matter what the administration proposes, that local taxpayers keep underwriting to make things happen in Quincy Center. Bottom line, what is before you is instead Coke and mirrors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against? I just said thank you, and then asked if anybody else would like to speak against.
Can you hear me?
Good evening. Yes. Could you just say your name and your address for the record, please? Thank you.
My name's Virginia Ryan. I live at 89 Alrick Road in Quincy, Mass. I spoke last month on this ordinance, this tax break, and I am again opposed to it. In fact, we seem to be getting, giving a lot of tax breaks to developers, to build apartments, and why aren't we doing anything about increasing home ownership? Our home ownership right now is 43%. It's below 50%. With home ownership, people care a little bit more about the community, and they'll vote a little bit more. Our voting statistics in this city is atrocious, and I have never seen any type of outreach from the city to increase it. I would also like to state that this sound system sucks. You need to spend some money on a new sound system. I can barely hear you when you talk. This speaker stinks. So please, if you spend a lot of money, spend it on a new sound system. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against? Good evening.
Hello, my name is Ziqiang Yuan. I'm living at 8 Harvick Lane, Unit B. So will big developers keep getting tax breaks? Residents see their property tax increase every year. And another reason for the property tax increase is because Quincy is in a huge debt, $1.5 billion debt for a city of this size is outrageous. I know you will later discussing that $8.25 million actual borrowing on the top of 2026 budget. I want to tell you people's response when they heard this actual borrowing. No more borrowing, that's their response. They even didn't want to hear what this borrowing is for. Just listen, just hear the city planning to borrow more money already scared them. Why? Why did people feel so strong about it? It's because Quincy has borrowed too much. $1.6 billion debt for a city of this size is ridiculous. Quincy is not a rich city, also is not a poor one, is something in the middle in Massachusetts. But how come the debt per capita is the highest in whole Massachusetts? And that directly drive up residents' property tax. Residents are held hostage to pay back for this huge debt for decades. And when residents raised concerns about the rising property tax becoming unaffordable at the past hearings, I was shocked to hear some counselors commented saying, "That's because they mismanaged their finance, and that's their problem, not a city's problem." How can you say that? You are elected to represent your constituents. They are problems, are your problems. I hope you remember that and work hard to work for the best interests of people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against? Okay, and I just want to remind folks that there are papers in the back for folks to sign, either for or against, if you're undecided. Okay, with that, we're going to continue on with the ordinance committee meeting. First item in ordinance is 2025-058, ordinance amending zoning section 8.5 transit-oriented districts. Before I open it up to my colleagues for discussion, I just want to mention that during the public hearing, there was something submitted in opposition from Maria Mulligan from 21 Winthrop Avenue, so I just want to make sure that that's on the record. And with that, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments on, again, order number 2025-058, transit-oriented districts. Counselor Campbell?
Can you make a motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Yes.
Okay, we don't need a second in committee. Any questions or comments on the item? Yes. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to the next item in ordinance, 2025-058, I'm sorry, 2025-068, order amending housing, development zone, and plan H-TIP. And before I open it up to my colleagues for any questions, comments, or discussion, I just want to clarify for us so that we're clear on the discussion this evening, that this vote is not on a tax break, or the discussion is not on a tax break, it's on the zoning itself. And so I just want to remind my colleagues and folks tuning in on that, that this item, again, is not a discussion on the tax break itself. That's not what's being discussed, it's not what's being considered, but rather the zoning itself. So with that clarification, I'd like to open it up to my colleagues for any questions or comments.
I'm just going to make a motion.
Counselor Campbell to make a motion. Any questions or comments on this motion? Yes, Counselor Ash?
Madam Chairwoman, as the ordinance reads the last line of the ordinance, the last sentence does say, "Further, the city council authorizes the mayor to negotiate tax increment exemptions for a period not to exceed 20 years for certified HD projects within the HD zone in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5M." I know through, Madam Chairwoman, your testimony today and discussions with the intention of the ordinance is not to authorize the mayor to negotiate these tax increments and increases, but rather to submit this property for the zoning under the H-TIP requirements. I do think that that language needs to be specific, though, in this ordinance, so I would propose an amendment to this language that says that any potential tax breaks or tax increment exemptions come back to the body for a vote on each specific increment exemption, should that be the case down the line.
Okay. So Counselor Ash, you're offering an amendment to the last sentence or the last section of the ordinance, where it says, "Further, the city council authorizes the mayor to negotiate tax increment exemptions." And then, do we want to say, like, right there at that point, to insert the language about it having to come back? Just codifying, I mean, that's what has to happen anyways, but you would like to codify the language in this ordinance, correct?
Correct.
That has to come back before this body?
Yeah, if we added "subject to city council approval," I believe that accomplishes what I would like to see in this ordinance.
So we're going to go ahead and say again, just to my colleagues, at the bottom of the ordinance, the last sentence, "Further, the city council authorizes the mayor to negotiate tax increment exemptions, comma, subject to city council approval, comma," and that's the proposed amendment, correct?
Correct.
Again, and this just codifies what the process already is, but we'd like to include it in here. Okay, that's fine. Seconded by Counselor Harris, any questions about the language that you're looking to add in here to codify? Okay, so with that, I do want to make sure I do a roll call on this amendment. So Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Devine?
Yes.
Counselor DeBona?
Yes.
Counselor Harris?
Yes.
Counselor Mitten?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes. Okay. Any other questions or comments? We do have a motion to approve. Now, I just want to make sure, can we?
So motion to approve as amended?
Yes, correct. Can we just, motion to approve as amended by Counselor DeBona? Okay, and that's all right, if you retract your motion, great. Okay, so we have a counsel to approve as amended by Counselor DeBona. All those in favor? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. So we're going to go ahead, and before I open Finance Committee, because we do have a City Council meeting scheduled at 7:30, go ahead and open City Council at 7:30 before we go back into then Finance Committee for those items, okay? And with that, I'd like to adjourn the ordinance committee meeting at 7:28 PM. I'd like to open up the Monday, June 16th, meeting of the Quincy City Council. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash?
Present.
Counselor Campbell?
Yes.
Counselor Devine?
Yes.
Counselor DeBona?
Present.
Counselor Harris?
Present.
Counselor Liang?
Present.
Counsel McCarthy?
Counsel Minton?
President King. Seven members, you have a quorum.
Thank you. And I'd like to ask everybody to stand if they are able to, and take a moment of silence to use as you see fit. You turn to the flag for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, could you read the open meeting law, please?
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible.
Thank you so much. And can we just go to the first item on the agenda before we recess?
Honoring the U-15 Quincy Youth Boys Lacrosse Team.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Exciting to follow the exciting talks that's been going on, so I'm happy to be here. I gotta see if we can get them to come in.
Jen's getting them.
You'll hear them before you see them. So I wanted to...
Counsel, can you just move it up a little?
Yeah.
Thank you.
There it is. Better? All right, so I wanted to welcome the Quincy Youth Boys Lacrosse Program here tonight. Typically, I think you stick with high schools, maybe, and maybe they go to a high level. But I think this is a significant group of guys, and a group of families, group that's come in here. The lacrosse program over the past several years has really, really, really evolved, and it's unfortunately taken a number on the baseball and the softball teams for the girls. It's really something that's become incredibly popular. I think when we started it with my family, there was definitely a big leap. That went from being Quincy good to really, really good. And I think this group here has proven to be a really, really solid team, and they did things this year that really weren't possible a few years ago. And I think a lot of that has to do with the coaching. Kevin Lynch, where is he? Kevin Lynch? Kevin's got a family full of lacrosse players, his two daughters, and his son played. Incredible athletes, but he completely bought into lacrosse bringing, he's actually from Hingham, right? He's from Hingham, and he came here, and he knew that the program needed some work. So he is constantly working. He called me this past summer, looking to just create a program where we can bring kids in and work with it. And I think watching this whole develop has a lot to do with the parents, the coaches, and certainly Kevin and all his work. So Kevin, congratulations on an excellent job.
So I want to read this because I think it's worth it. The director of Quincy Boys Lacrosse is Dan Sampson. Dan, where are you? There he is, right there. He's got about 45 kids, and I think they all play, are exceptional in sports. So really great kids, but really, the whole group really just buys in, and they do an incredible job. And it's really a credit to the city to see how we have so many options available for these kids, and they're taking advantage of it, and they're also doing well. So there is a huge group here, so I want to read, "The Quincy Youth Boys Lacrosse Team competes, completes an undefeated season. The Quincy Youth Boys Lacrosse Team, 11-0, capped off its historic season by winning the 2025 Old Colony League Lacrosse Championship. The U-15 team, consisting of current 7th and 8th grade students, student athletes, achieved the first undefeated season in program history by beating Bridgewater, U-15, 10-1 by a score of 5-2. Their journey to the championship also included winning the 2025 Battle of Boston tournament. The team's achievement is a testament to the hard work of both the players and dedicated coaching staff. The 2025 OCLL Championship for the Quincy Youth Boys Lacrosse marks a second title in three years. The recent success highlights the growing popularity and talented student athletes in Quincy. With a strong foundation established on skill development and teamwork, the future of lacrosse in Quincy looks bright for these young athletes." So I wanted to count off all the names here of the guys. I think maybe what we'll do is, I'll say your name, we'll go up, and we'll take a picture after all that. But I wanted to make sure, in the 7th grade group, Liam Sampson, Cillian Connor, Aiden Tran, Cameron Dowd, Anthony O'Brien, Joseph McClory, Coletti Giovanni, Owen O'Connell, Michael Norton, Kayden Wallace, Declan O'Hare, Eddie Ford, and Hunter Clapp, 7th graders. The 8th grade group, Brian Levy, Brady Proto, Michael Boyle, David DeBona, Sage Ocampo, Benjamin Long, Ryan Green, Joseph Burke, Nicholas LaMonica, Gregory Shue, Merritt Konish, and Charlie McLaughlin, 8th grade. I mentioned the head coach, Kevin Lynch. He's incredible. We have guys coming back, Jack O'Brien, Finn Sullivan, and Brian Konish as the assistant coaches in the whole program. Really deserve a great round of applause. Congratulations.
So you need to remind us of one of the most important reasons why I do our job, and thank you all for making us so proud. So with that, I'd like to call a recess of the City Council meeting to have folks come up, have the team come up, their family members. We can all squeeze in here to grab a photo, and then after that, we'll go into Finance Committee. Could you call the roll? Do you mind calling the roll for her, because she's just over there?
Oh, sure.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash? Counselor Campbell?
Present.
Counselor Devine?
Right.
Counselor DeBona?
Present.
Counselor Harris?
Present.
Counselor Liang?
Present.
Counselor Minton?
Present.
Seven, oh, six.
Thank you. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, I'm sorry, and may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. So I'm going to go ahead and reopen the public hearing that was open before on 2025-074, Order Land Disposition Agreement-1620 Hancock Street. Again, anybody wishing to speak in favor, please feel free to come up to the podium. Okay, anybody wishing to speak against, please feel free to come up to the podium.
People have to let me know. So I'm speaking to you once again, Jocelyn Sedney...
This is a different public hearing, so if you could just state your name and your address for the record.
Jocelyn Sedney, 85 Monroe Road. I am once again speaking to you on behalf of the taxpayers of Quincy, because nobody else seems to be doing that. I have no problem with this land disposition agreement in terms of selling this piece of property. It's clearly a blighted property. It's a mystery to me as to why we didn't put that little pocket park on the piece of property that we took by eminent domain, rather than buying the piece of property down the street, taking a commercial entity off the tax rolls. But be that as it may, I have no problem at all selling this piece of property. But look at the terms of the sale. We hear, oh, the appraisal for the eminent domain is different than the appraisal for the sale, because the appraisal for the eminent domain takes into account all the potential uses in the future of the property. This is the use of the future. This is the use of the property, and it's being used for a tremendous development where people are going to make a lot of money. Would they pay another $300,000 for this piece of property? Yes. Are they going to let this deal go away without paying what we paid for that property? No. It's time to stop. We buy property high, we sell property low. As I understand it, maybe I'm wrong, this piece of property, the blighted piece of property, is a subject of litigation. The entity from whom it was purchased thinks they didn't get paid enough. Well, if they win, and we didn't pay enough, then we're going to have to pay them more, and it's even a greater loss that we're taking. If it gets settled, like most lawsuits do, and we say, oh, we'll pay you another $200,000, that's another loss. That's an even greater loss for the taxpayers of Quincy. We're supposed to be a city led by a mayor who's so tremendous, he deserves one of the highest salaries in the United States of America, who can drive a hard bargain. Why are we agreeing, are you being even asked to agree, to sell a piece of property for less than we bought it for? And you can hold up this deal because of that. All the other terms must, might be great, might be fantastic. I have no problem with the other terms, but this is wrong, and it's wrong for the taxpayers of Quincy. And again, as I said before tonight, it is time for somebody in this room to stand up for the taxpayers of Quincy.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak against?
Good evening. Debbie Riley. I live at 9 Langgrain Street. Jocelyn's always a hard act to follow. I don't know if I'm necessarily, you know, against this, other than it just seems to be another project that is being initiated, when there's so many projects already in place. It seems like we've become sort of a, almost a real estate investment trust, where we are just amassing properties, we're selling them, we're repurposing things. And I'd just like to, for the record, you know, remind people of a couple of things that have still lingered on. And I have to credit Peter Blandino with pulling together a really nice update for the people, the city, on these matters, and a couple that he missed. So 128 Bayview Road was purchased by the city in 2018 for $450,000, as was 1303 C Street for $500,000. And my recollection was that was intended to be a maritime center. My last time looking at one of those properties, it was incredibly blighted. I don't know where the maritime center stands. We were supposed to have the police marine unit in there, and that seems to have sort of stalled at a time when there is so limited housing, that to have taken two single-family homes off the market is unfortunate, in addition to the taxes. 662 to 674 Southern Artery, this thing is terrible, my goodness. That is on Southern Artery, where we paid $4.5 million in 2021, and it seems like at this point, we are just landlords for CVS and Marneke, I think. 74 Greenleaf Street, that was acquired in 2017 for $700,000. I guess that houses the Public Buildings Department, but 50 Saville Ave was to be sold to pay for that, and that never happened. Are we, anyways. 797 Quincy Shore Drive, I think we can all remember the drama that took place with that, the old Beachcomber site. That was purchased in 2021 for $2.25 million, after it had been sold to a developer for $1.45 million. So we paid a premium for an unimproved piece of property there. 24, 26, 28 Adams Street, that's all intended to be for the Adams Library, but I think we're hearing that that's probably not going to be the use of that any longer. 231 Southern Artery was purchased for $300,000. That's the site of the old Burke Car Rental, and that seems to be used for equipment storage. 1227 Hancock Street, the old Monroe Building, that was intended to be for the new city hall in Quincy College, purchased with COVID money for $15 million. And again, we seem to be just a landlord at that point for that property. 47 to 61 Quincy Avenue, that was purchased in 2020 for $1.5 million for the new fire headquarters. And I guess at this point, five years later, it's still in the design stage. And finally, I think this is my last one. Oh, no, there's two. 119 Crescent Street, the site of the former St. Mary's Catholic School, was purchased in 2019 for $2.7 million. And I think it's used for some training, but there's certainly no plans for a school yet. And finally, 6 to 10 McGrath Highway was purchased for $1.8 million, and they were told that it was going to be used for AA meetings, and, you know, that that was a really important use for the community, and it has since been transferred to state control. So I just hope that this particular project, you know, ends up being what's intended and what's presented here to this body, and that they make their decision, and it gets executed somewhat in line with what was planned. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to speak against? Okay, so we'll go ahead and move on to discussion, and before we do, I just want to, I know my colleagues know, but I just want to remind my colleagues that, since this is the first time we're meeting on this in committee, in Finance Committee, that this is an initial conversation. We are going to keep this in here so that we can continue to discuss this before anything moves. So again, just, I know my colleagues know this, but just want to remind us. But are there any initial thoughts or comments from my colleagues on this particular item? Counsel DeBona?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So would I come to the conclusion that there's no vote tonight? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to talk a little bit about this particular property. You know, I grew up in the neighborhood of Quincy Point, where the former Prevey's, Mr. Kelly's, Sumna Bakery, Mr. Kelly's became Quincy Adams Restaurant, in that little neighborhood. My dad still lives there today. And as a child... And as a child, as a kid, as a teenager, I used to ride my bike and even walk up to the Tasso's Pizza. They had a nice Greek-style pizza, and they had some pinball machines and some video games, and it was something I frequented quite a bit. And I knew the Tasso family. I went to school with a couple of the kids, and he was a very nice guy. What happened in April 2001 is there was a fire, and the fire unfortunately displaced them. They ended up relocating to Norwood. They still exist today. They're still over there. But, and then for a while, it sat there, decrepit, blighted, nothing being done, and then finally, it was demolished a few years ago. It's been sitting there on that vacant lot or blighted lot for now 24 years. 24 years later, here we are tonight, talking about this particular property. Next door, 16 maybe 30, I know Mr. Walker talked a little bit about Coleman's, which I used to buy my Chateau Adidas there when I was a kid, and all my sneakers, and I think he forgot that there was a Blockbuster Video that went there right after, and then Good Health. Good Health used to be across the street, and they relocated across. But we're talking about that little basic parcel particularly there. Just a little history. I mean, former Counselor Palmucci and I, many years ago, probably eight years ago, we put forth a resolution about the Hancock Street Corridor. Everything that went from the beginning of Hancock Street in the Quincy Square, the downtown, all the way down, and it extended down to this particular property. We talked about, and we asked the mayor, we asked the administration to come forward and do anything in your power to get, to add some value to these particular properties. Here we are tonight, talking about this particular property 24 years later, where eight years ago, we continued to ask the mayor to, you know, we got to move forward, the downtown, we got to get it revitalized. I wish we had done it eight years ago because we would have missed the COVID five years. The rates would have been different. Development probably would have been a little different, but here we are tonight. We're no vote tonight. I just wanted to give a little history and a little backtrack of, that's the economic engine that continues to move Quincy forward. If you look at what was been done down there, you can see it, you can feel it, you can touch it, you can frequent it. We've done a lot of great things down in the downtown already with the farmer's market and all the different, you know, community events that we've done inside that fours We want to continue to move and move forward, and everybody's got to do a little piece of the pie. As you can see, I used to frequent the Napoli's Pizza, which is just recently torn down. But these were blighted properties. People no longer use these particular properties, and now we have to move forward to get to another stage of it. I heard someone talk about TJ Maxx. I love TJ Maxx. I'm sure we're going to be able to talk to a developer to tell him, hey, listen, can we find a TJ Maxx that in the mile radius of this area? I know when we were doing the Abbey, we talked about a Target, was able to get a Target. So, you know, you got to have a relationship with these folks, and you're going to be able to initiate these different properties and having the proper retail. I love the Dollar Store. I love Dollar Tree as well. Someone talked about it a little earlier. I love those two places, and I'm sure we'll find another location for those, I'm sure, in the vicinity of it. Back to 1620, you know, it's been sitting there for 24 years. How long are we going to wait? How long are we, you know, other people are doing the property. If you look and you go down to the Hand and Parkway, you're seeing a lot of construction going on today. We put in the infrastructure of the General's Bridge, and now those two, to the left, to the right, have now been constructed. They're constantly moving along and trudging along. A nice General's Park is there. This is just right across the way. This is just right across the way. Right across the street is this 1620 property. So I know folks are a little hesitant about change, but I wanted this change eight years ago, and that's why me and Counselor Palmucci moved this forward, to ask the administration, to ask the mayor, let's get, let's get moving on these properties so we can get the downtown up and running. But just, just look, look outside. Look, look at Hancock Adams Common. Look at all the different variety of things that we have right now. This is the next piece of the puzzle, and this extends it down. I mean, this particular property has been blighted for 24 years, and I'm sure there's going to be other properties around there, like the Napoli's Pizza is going to be revitalized as well. But this is all, this is where we want the construction to be. This is where we want our development to be in the downtown, because this is the economic engine that is going to make us go forward. And once these things, these particular properties are completed, another developer or another person or another entity will come forward and do another development, like particularly Quincy Center right out here. But it's all a piece of the puzzle. It's all a piece of the puzzle. Westchester was the first one, and they constructed their steel. And then Galvatron did their, their particular property, then LBC did theirs, and the O'Connell did. Everybody did a little piece of the pie. This is another part of the piece of the pie to move the city forward. So I echo what Mr. Walker had, had mentioned earlier, because he brought me back 10 years ago when everything was trying to be constructed here, 2015. So I know we're not going to vote on this tonight, but folks need to know that we've been sitting on this property for 24 years. 24 years it's been blighted and been sat there, going aways without tax, tax funds coming into the city. So I just wanted to get that out there. People think that, you know, this is a property that hasn't been done in the last year, a couple of years, but it's been 24 years, it's mentioned. So I know we're not voting on anything tonight, but we got to move this city forward, and this downtown district is where we want the construction to be at. We want the downtown to move forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Counselor. And yeah, absolutely, we're just looking for any initial thoughts, since this is staying in committee for further deliberation. So any other initial thoughts, questions, comments from my colleagues? Okay, Counselor Ash.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I do, you know, I've gone through the LDA. I think that the property is ripe for development. Of course, I would like to see the number higher. I think that goes without saying. I appreciate that we're not voting on this tonight so we can go through the appraisals. I also understand, you know, the, the difference between the points in time when the property is sold and kind of the, the risks associated with each transaction. But I do think that to be selling it at the, the lower number does warrant a dive into the appraisal. So I appreciate that we're not going to be taking a vote tonight. Thank you.
Questions, again, initial thoughts, comments from folks? All right, great. So we're going to move on to the next item in committee, which is 2025-075 Appropriation $8,250,000 for Equipment and Capital Improvements. We're going to go ahead and move to the presentation first before we open up for deliberation. Mr. Walker?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. It is my pleasure to provide a brief overview on this year's relatively small capital investment. As this body knows, in years past, these capital programs have come in with usually one, maybe two major projects tied to them. This year's a little bit different. This is truly the bare bones basics of what the administration believes we need to keep our various departments up and running at a, at a sustainable pace. I always go back to Counselor DeBona. Occasionally, we'll say, you know, what are the needs versus the wants? And I think the mayor and the team this year really took pains on paring this down to the wants. I'm going to touch briefly on an overview, and I'm also going to play the role of Commissioner Hines this evening, as he is out of town on his particular projects. And we'll have a couple of the department heads come up just briefly, talk about what's in their items. But as you can see from this summary, it's Public Buildings, $3.1 million, Natural Resources, 1.6, Fire Department, $2 million, Police Department, $800,000, Public Schools, $750,000. And between Fire, Police, and Public Schools, that is all transportation-related. Those are police cruises, fire engines, and school buses. We'll have Chief Kennedy speak briefly on the need for the cruiser investment. Chief Jackson speak briefly on the fire engine investment. And the School Department's here to answer questions. I don't know that we need to, they're school buses, so fairly self-explanatory. But I will walk through Commissioner Hines just briefly for Public Buildings, general repairs, this is everything in the kitchen sink, window replacements, what, anything we need to do around various city buildings, including most likely a new sound system in this room. One of the big items you'll see here is asbestos abatement across municipal buildings. That's primarily schools, and we've done, Commissioner Hines working with the School Department over the last five or so years, and thanks to the help of this body, just an outstanding amount of work getting our older buildings rid of asbestos, and that process will continue here. And the last item here you'll see is City Hall Elevator Replacement. Anyone who has been in that elevator knows why it needs to be replaced. See some upgrades to the Thomas Graeme Structural Mechanical Systems, a similar elevator replacement at the Lincoln Hancock School, again, going back to needs. These are facilities that need to be upgraded at this point in time. Department of Natural Resources, I'm going to have Recreation Director, who's with us tonight, Chris Rooney, come up and say a few words.
Hey, Counselors. Department of Natural Resources, the citywide playground and open space equipment. This funding will support the replacement and upgrading of playground and open space equipment at multiple municipal parks and recreational areas across the city. Many of these sites contain activity structures and fixtures that are approaching the end of their functional lifespan. So the proposed upgrades will focus on replacing current equipment in new installations that meet current safety and accessibility standards. The fleet modernization is allocation will be used for the acquisition of heavy-duty equipment, specifically trucks and frontline service vehicles larger than one ton in capacity. So replacement vehicles will be of the same classification and selected based on operations suitability for daily maintenance, groundskeeping, and site management. We have recreational vehicles and utility equipment. We are going to request for one half-ton pickup truck, two small utility trucks, one carryall 1,700 vehicle for park access. And this project is for the four vehicles to enhance mobility and operational capacity for our department. And lastly, the light equipment and groundskeeping tools. This funding will support the purchase of individual use light maintenance equipment. Eligible items include commercial-grade lawn mowers, leaf blowers, string trimmers, small tractors, and other portable tools utilized for daily maintenance of city parks and green spaces. Thank you.
As the fire chief's on his way up here to talk briefly about the engine investment, I forgot to mention at the top that Municipal Finance Director Eric Mason and his team are here. You all have been on receipt of a finance report on this, and he's here to answer any questions you may have relative to the financial aspect of it.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening, Counselors. Chief of Staff Walker, thank you for your consideration. Here to answer any questions that you might have about these trucks.
Could we, do, would you mind if we actually went through the rest of the presentation first and then opens it up for questions or comments?
Sure.
Sorry about that.
No, no worries at all.
Thank you.
So what I'll do is I'll just walk through the rest of the presentation.
Please.
Knowing that all the departments are here. The Police Department, as we mentioned earlier, $800,000 for new vehicles, and you can see the details on that purchase in this presentation. You also have the full report in front of you. And for the schools, $750,000 for school buses, one large bus, and actually, I'm sorry, three, three full-sized buses and five smaller buses. And the School Department is here to answer any questions anyone has on school buses. And the last slide here, you just see how this is all break, how this is broken up.
Great. Thank you. So let's go, if my colleagues will indulge me, I just want to go department by department. Does that sound good to folks? Great. So let's go ahead and start with Public Buildings. Any questions, comments, or thoughts from my colleagues on just the Public Buildings section? Okay. Oh, yes. Counselor DeBona.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just real quick, I'm just looking at it. $3.1 million for general repairs to firehouses, schools, maintenance buildings, asbestos across municipal buildings, and City Hall Elevator Replacement. And then we get into Thomas Graeme Public Library and Lincoln Hancock Elevator Replacements. I'm glad and happy that Commissioner Hines went around and did a punch list, as well as the administration and the mayor, to upgrade these things before it gets far behind. I see elevators in here, City Hall Elevator Replacement, I can imagine that one. But you have to get in front of some of these things, and the CIP coming in front of us tonight, that's what we had, a capital improvement plan, and when needed, come in front of the, the council to look for these items. I think it's very important to get to these, these particular items before they get out of whack, and, and as a safety precaution. So talking about this particular, and, and Mr. Walker said it alluded to, wants versus needs, I'm sure that these needs are due, and I'm happy to have you guys in front of us tonight. So just, just an overview just on Public Buildings. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Again, any other questions or comments just on the Public Buildings section? Counselor Ash?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I think my, my question is maybe an overall question with the CIP, but I guess it, well, I shouldn't say I guess, it lends itself to, it lends itself to specifically the Public Buildings with respect to, say, the elevator replacements, because I see here, we're, we're looking at elevator replacements, $400,000 for City Hall, $400,000 for Lincoln Hancock. My question is, is there a cost, is there a benefit to doing a number of these similar projects at the same time? And is there a cost-saving, is there any way that we are saving money by, say, looking at all of the elevators at the same time with one contractor, and in the aggregate, then saving money in the long term? And if we've considered that with, with this CIP, given that, you know, at least with Public Buildings, a number of, a number of the issues will be common between the buildings as they get older?
Sure. Through you, Madam Chairwoman, on the elevators in particular, they, they tend to be one-offs. They're very different in, in each building. No elevator is, in any building is sort of uniform, so I'm not quite sure that we would benefit, because you have to spec everything out, and you're not getting any economies of scale. Perhaps some relative to the labor, but on elevators in particular, I don't see any great difference between doing them as they come up or in one larger package. I think some of the other projects, you do see some of that. The asbestos is one, is certainly one. HVAC systems is certainly another, and we've done a lot of that work. You see that there's, there's venting system installations here, there's rooftop chiller replacement at the library here. I think Commissioner Hines over the years has done a great job prioritizing to find those economies of scale, that if we do have a batch of boilers, we can come in for a batch of boilers, because there might be some savings there, or a batch of HVAC repairs, because there might be some savings from that. So in particular, on these two elevator questions, I think probably the, the answer is not much, but it's certainly worth looking at, and if we can add a couple more in there, then we certainly would.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, that the stone stairway is, is that $100,000, is that the whole cost, or is that, is there anything through CPC that's paying for part of that? Is that?
That is the whole cost.
Okay, so there's no other?
There is no CPC on that project.
Okay, all right. Gotcha. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments on the Public Buildings before we move to the other departments? Great, so let's move on to Department of Natural Resources. Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Rooney, thanks for coming up tonight. I know you're doing a great job since you've come in the position. I'm going to appreciate all your hard work, and we really appreciate you ice skating and teaching the kids how to ice skate out there, so.
It's a lot of fun, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate it. Citywide Playground and Open Space Equipment, you know, obviously, the CPC is, we've done over close to, close to 30 playgrounds. Are you going to be upgrading those particular playgrounds and all of them?
Yeah, so we're going to be updating a wide range of playgrounds. A lot of the equipment from the six and seven years, we'll be replacing from the last time. Warranty on this equipment is about two years, and we're in years four, five, and six on a lot of the equipment, so it's going to be a wide range. We're also going to target, you know, Russell Park and McCarter Park is the smaller playgrounds that we're going to do as well.
I have a little ask for you. My colleague from Ward 1 is not here tonight. LaBrec, I know it's a new playground, used to be the one over on the, the little side street there, and we moved it. It had a lot of shade over there, and I've had an ask over the years about maybe possibly getting some type of umbrella, just be- just because the hot months, especially during rec season, when the rec leaders are out there having some type of canopy because the sun is direct, it's on the old existing basketball court it used to be. So that's where it's at in LaBrec. If we can maybe take a look, if you could take a look at some of the playgrounds that don't have shade and maybe if we can, I know the new Rick de Crestafaro Center has it, whereas like kind of the canopy slash umbrella type of thing and, you know, people can get underneath it. It's just during those hot, hot summer days that it really, really comes down on them. So if you can maybe take a punch list and maybe look around and see if any other playgrounds in particular throughout the city may need those.
Absolutely, Counselor.
I appreciate it, I appreciate it. The heavy equipment, the recreational stuff, based on what you have in house right now, will this give you the ability to actually, time management, would it allow you to condense down how much time it takes to do some of the grass cuttings and all these other things?
Yeah, so for the heavy equipment, it is just phasing out the older equipment we have here, but like we said, it's gonna be the same quality equipment. It's just gonna be upgraded and more fuel efficient as it is gonna be the newer equipment as well.
What are you gonna do with the existing ones that we have? Are you gonna put them to the back end or how do you?
I don't 100% know the plan for that. That hasn't been brought to me, but I think the plan would be to get rid of them and update the whole fleet of new vehicles.
I'm happy to see this in front of us tonight. As you know, the equipment can really bear down and be broken. I'm glad you're up here tonight. So very important items, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Devine?
How are you? Thank you very much for coming in tonight. On Bunker Hill Lane, we have a very small little playground there. Is that included in there? Because that one seems to be forgotten.
Yeah, so that would be looked at if the equipment is older and if we need to upgrade any of that safety equipment, we would be looking at that, yes.
Okay. Should I follow up to make sure it's?
Absolutely.
Yeah, just wanna make sure. And then, yeah, great. And this has nothing to do with that, this, but I saw a lot of trees going in today in Ward Four, some very big 22, 25 foot tall trees, super excited. And that's part of you guys' natural resources, so thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments from Mr. Rooney on this one? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's go ahead and move on to the Fire Department. Any questions or comments from my colleagues for the chief on the Fire Department items? Counselor Devine, please.
We'll let him catch up.
Of course.
Come on, quick, quick.
Hi again, Chief.
Oh, yeah, thank you again for your consideration tonight.
How are you, Chief? Thank you for coming in.
Good, how you doing?
Super excited. How, I've forgotten, how long does it take to get these modular fire trucks now? Because we were having issues before.
These trucks, just to put it into context, I know that I've been in front of you before for fire apparatus and we've talked about the extended wait times. These trucks here, these Faust Brothers trucks, would be available in a couple of months. So the difference is Faust Brothers, this company builds one fire truck, there's no customization. They just build the same exact truck every single time as opposed to us being able to sit down with the manufacturer and spec a truck out for the city of Quincy, which is normally what we do. That being said, these are really nice trucks. They use the same motor, the same pump, the same transmission that we normally put in. The reason these trucks, the lion's share of the difference in price is in the motor. This is a nine liter motor. We've been using 12 liter motors, much bigger, much more powerful. That being said, these trucks aren't underpowered. The way that we spec out our trucks, it's the best bang for your buck basically, is we build our trucks to keep them on the road for 20 to 25 years. We'll put the biggest engine that they're using at the time. So like I said, these trucks that we spec out nowadays, they're 12 liter motors, we tune them down so they run like these motors we're talking about tonight, these nine liter motors. And then what we'll do is we'll detune them in 10 or 12 years, so the truck never misses a step. We don't have that luxury with these Faust Brothers trucks. These are just nine liter engines. They'll run as nine liter engines the entire life of the truck. So these are probably 12 to 15 year trucks as opposed to 20 plus years what we normally get, but they're a lot less expensive and we can still perform our mission to the citizens of Quincy with these trucks, no doubt about it. There's just some differences operationally that we'll have to, we'll have to get used to, so.
And we confirmed that we have a couple of these?
Yeah.
Yeah?
Yep.
That's great. So I'm happy to hear all that because I know it's been a nightmare for you trying to get other trucks and it keeps going longer and longer.
Yeah.
So for the safety of our constituents and our neighbors and all you firefighters and everybody involved, I'm happy to hear because you definitely do not want an old fire truck trying to come out and.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it. And, you know, to address, I heard that, talked about the wants and the needs up here. This is a need, you know, post COVID, this threw our replacement schedule for the apparatus way off. I mean, we went from getting a truck in a year to it takes four years to get a truck now. Through, getting these trucks would be a huge boon for us. This would kind of put us back on track. This is absolutely a need. This isn't the want, this is kind of critical. We were lucky to kind of come across these trucks, so.
That's good. And then one other thing, somebody mentioned Crescent Street and the purchase of the school. I just wanted to put a plug in there that I love seeing you guys there, you're almost, you're there all the time, you're doing safety training and I believe you run the academy out of there?
Yeah, I mean Crescent Street's been a huge boon for us. I mean, quite frankly, that has been, we've trained so many people down there to be able to go down there and throw ground ladders, wrap a hydrant. We use the school to do ASHA training with the police. Like we have, we've really wrung the towel out on that location, so that has not sat idle just doing nothing in the meantime. I mean, it's been a huge, huge boon for us, so.
I have a selfish reason too, is that I like knowing that you guys are there because we had a fire around the corner on Hall Place and I don't think you came from there, but you, your men were able to put it out in record time, so.
I remember, we were all training there that day, actually. Companies, yeah, basically right across the street.
I feel, I feel like we're lucky that we have you guys hanging around there, you know, and you'll get to us quicker. Sorry about everybody else, but that's it. But thank you very much.
Yeah, no, thank you. Thank you for your support, Counselor.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Ash?
Madam Chairwoman. Chief, thank you for the explanation. I just wanna be clear, are these two engines going to be replacing current engines that are?
Yes.
In, are they broken down or do they?
I know, so these two engines, one will replace Engine Three at Quincy Point, the other will replace Engine Four at Wallaston. Both of those trucks right now are 2007s, so they're both 18 years old, which we gotta think about moving on these trucks and getting rid of them. NFPA after 25 years says mothball them entirely. We're fortunate having two good mechanics that keep these trucks on the road and they get the maintenance they need when they need it. So we're very lucky in the city of Quincy to have two very capable mechanics that extend the life of these trucks, but, yeah.
Are those 2007s, are those the oldest trucks?
No. So right now Engine Six is running a 2005 E1. So the plan is, and I know this is kind of tough to follow, I think in these terms every day, so one will go to Engine Three, one will go to Engine Four, which would free up two 2007s. One 2007 would go to Squanum and the other would go to Engine Six. So the peninsulas would all have 2007 E1s for right now. And we have other trucks on order with KME. We have an engine and a ladder that will be coming in this calendar year. When that engine comes in, it will go to Engine Five and the truck that's running right now at Engine Five will go down to Engine Six. The ladder truck that comes in this calendar year will go down and become Ladder Five. The truck that's Ladder Five tonight will go down to Engine Six. So Engine Six will be seven and a half years old and Ladder Four will be 10, so they'll be in pretty good shape down there. So like I said, this will kind of get us back on track with our replacement schedule, these two trucks.
So essentially each station will have this, it's close to the same makeup of vehicles as possible, years, models, making sure that, you know, if each station has one vehicle that's 18 or 20 years old, they also have some that are, say, seven or eight years old or brand new and rotating that.
Right.
The, I know when we were discussing the FY '26 budget, we discussed a grant really that came in to fund or supplement a lot of the new hires that the Fire Department was looking at.
Yes.
Are there any other potential avenues for third parties with funds to cover things like vehicles? And if so, have those been explored?
I don't think that they are always being explored. We have about a half dozen grant writers on our job that, as you know, do a fantastic job. Matter of fact, couple of our latest purchases, the rescue and engine two were bought with grant money. Right now, I don't think that vehicles are something that we can follow up on, but they're always scouring, looking for that.
Okay. And then my final question, Chief, I hear often, you know, we, the Ward Councilors or dare I say all the Councilors, we often hear one of the big issues in the city is parking. And people will say, in case of an emergency, a fire truck could never get down my street because I've got cars on each side of the road. Are you finding or seeing that maybe emergency vehicles are being designed differently to combat that? Even maybe it's not, maybe it's not municipality based, but nationwide, statewide, you know, with the congestion in the cars, whatever side of the argument you fall on and with that particular argument, are you finding that emergency vehicles are being constructed differently or maybe more narrow?
So for our purposes here in Quincy, it's interesting that you bring that up. People are gonna think that we spoke prior to this meeting, so that's a very good point. So we normally keep the trucks at 96 inches. You have a choice between 96 and 100. You can go 94, but then you start to sacrifice compartment space. So we usually keep the trucks at 96 inches and we'll try to 45 the front bumpers for these squeeze through accidents and on corners. Believe it or not, that goes a long way towards minimizing swapping papers at the scene by 45 on the front bumper. So we do keep the trucks as small as possible and these Faust Brothers trucks that we're talking about, the cab is 96 inches and the body is 100.
Okay.
So.
No, I know, I see, I see your team on Mount Street, they often, some of your department, they practice the turns down, down there.
Yeah.
So that's always fascinating because you don't think it.
And so.
It works, but you don't think it will initially.
We'll make it work. So one of the big differences with these Faust Brothers trucks as opposed to the KMEs that we customize, we put an intake on the front bumper usually when we get the KMEs and we customize. And the reason for that is when I say a front intake, the water will go right from the hydrant through a hose right into the front bumper, the intake on the front bumper. The reason we put that there is if trucks are on both sides of the streets, sometimes we can't access the side intakes for the truck. So this opens up the front. With these Faust Brothers trucks, we don't have that as an option. They have side intakes only, we'll get by. This is how we, we operated like this for a millennia. We'll just go back to operating like that with these trucks. That's one of the things, one of the big differences with these trucks as compared to the KMEs.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments for our chief here? Yes, Counselor DeBona?
Chief Jackson, just wanna thank you for coming in tonight, giving us a breakdown of where these trucks are gonna go to with the new two vehicles coming in. I also see, you know, medical kits and defibrillators and fire hoses and other outfitting equipment procurement. So I just wanna say thank you for all your hard work. I'm wishing you safety for all firefighters throughout the summer as well.
Yeah, thank you.
And just continue to do what you're doing. You guys are doing a great job, guys and women as well.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your support. Thank you all of you for your support over the years. It's made a huge difference. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments? Great. Chief, thank you again for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
You too. Let's move on to the Police Department. Counselor DeBona?
Good evening.
Chief Kennedy, thank you for coming in tonight. I know previously, I've been on the council now for 10 years and previously Chief Keenan would come in and would go through the particular items like this. I see the 10 new Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicles. It was kind of the question I asked a little earlier, are you gonna be outfitting these and moving them, some of the other vehicles to other routes or different fleets? How is this particular operation gonna happen?
Yeah, so Counselor, so essentially we have 18 rail frontline patrol crews as in service. There's 15 sectors in the city and then another three frontline patrol supervisors. So what we generally try and do is turn those frontline cars over every year or two, usually every two years. So this appropriation would allow us to get 10 or 11, probably 10 new frontline cars and administrative detective car. The detective cars obviously last a lot longer. We know we have detective cars on the road right now that are 12 years old, but the frontline cars are going 24/7/365. So it's not only the miles that we put on them, but it's the engine hours because they're constantly running, you know, they're running computers and everything like that. So we try and flip them over in the good times, you know, every two years or so to keep them, to keep them going. The other vehicles we have, and we have about 129 marked and unmarked cars and 14 police motorcycles that we try and purchase through Department of Justice grants, so generally those don't come out of our budget. We do pretty well getting grants for those and also our specialty vehicles like our SWAT vehicles, accident reconstruction vehicles and the command post that we purchase were all urban area security initiative money, federal money that we were able to take in. So this appropriation here is basically for the frontline vehicles.
Well, like the Fire Department, it's public safety. I wanna thank all the men and women, the Police Department for all their hard work that they're doing. I wish them the safety over the summer as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor DeBona, particularly those who are riding on motorcycles, please extend our hope that they remain safe. Counselor Minton?
Hi, Chief, thanks for coming in. Just for the public that's watching, can you just go over some of the equipment these Martin Cruises carry?
Yeah, so I mean, the frontline cars will be carrying, you know, less than lethal equipment, 40 millimeter launchers, they'll carry ballistic shields that'll stop handgun rounds, you know, helmets, ballistic helmets, carry obviously the first aid kits, oxygen, the laptop that officers can actually, you know, write their reports and everything right from the car, the communication system, the, you know, the lights, the siren, all that stuff. But, you know, I think in here, I talked about ballistic glass, we don't have, you know, the ballistic rated glass. I think there's only a couple of departments, I think NYPD, Chicago PD has the reinforced glass and thankfully we don't need that here.
Thank you, Chief. Everybody's all trained to use all that equipment.
I'm sorry, sir?
Everybody's all trained to use that equipment, it's pretty amazing.
Yeah, so we're, that's, it's a work in progress to make sure that, especially with the less than lethal equipment, that the officers we've identified meet the post requirements and the Criminal Justice Training Council requirements to maintain their certification and that, so it's been, it pays huge dividends.
And the need to replace these Cruises on a regular basis is they'll be operated 24 hours a day pretty much.
Yeah, it's huge and we're very lucky in the city that we're able to do that. A lot of departments aren't able to do that. And I hear some horror stories of people who are, you know, some departments are driving Cruises that are basically not safe to be on the road. And we're very, very fortunate in the city that, you know, with the support of the mayor and the city council, that we're able to replenish our fleet and keep our vehicles running safely.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Any other counselors?
Thank you. That's what I get for chugging my water so quickly. Chief, thank you so much. We're gonna go ahead and move on to public schools now.
Thank you.
Thank you. So for public schools, any questions or comments from my colleagues for the public schools portion? Counselor DeBona, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Public schools, I see a large school bus procurement here, three full size 77 passenger buses. Is it, oh.
Good evening, Counsel.
Good evening.
Good to see you tonight. Public safety wise, how are we doing with our fleet of buses out there particularly right now?
So our fleet is in very good shape. We're asking for these buses for a couple of reasons. We do obviously have particularly the lodge buses that are getting older and absolutely need to be cycled out. need to be cycled out. We have about 12 current lodge buses right now, four of which are really in need of being cycled out. That's why we're asking for the three lodge buses tonight. We have 25 mini buses. We're asking for five additional mini buses, again for cycling in new ones and cycling out old ones, but also to expand our routes so that we can cut back on using outside vendors, which are much more expensive. So in the end, it should be cost effective for us to have these new mini buses so that we can eliminate more and more outside vendors, which will save us money.
These new, new buses that we have online here that we're going to be possibly purchasing with the approval tonight, do they have any other extra safety measures?
So all of our buses now are integrated buses, the mini buses in particular, so that they can accommodate all of our special education students. Right now, we're looking at, and we have already in the fleet, wheelchair vans, which are much more user friendly for our wheelchair students. So that we would not be asking for a wheelchair modification for the mini buses. We would be asking that those buses all be integrated for our special ed, special education students and that our wheelchair, wheelchair accessibility students would be driven by vans, which we have in our fleet.
Very much needed. I, I'm pretty sure you made a punchline of what we needed and these are definitely needs that we have.
Absolutely, yes. We absolutely need them for the fleet.
I appreciate it. Good to see all of you at the graduations. Quincy High School and North Quincy High School was beautiful out. I'm glad, I'm very happy that you continued the North Quincy outdoor.
Yes.
It allowed all the families, you know, some families had eight people and only been able to have two inside the, inside the gym. So I want to thank you and kudos to all the graduates that have just graduated Quincy and North Quincy High School.
And I am here tonight with Dr. Perkins, the Assistant Superintendent, and Mr. Malaney, the Senior Director of Business Affairs.
What a crew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vine?
Are, do these new school buses, they, they have seat belts?
They, the mini buses are integrated seats, so yes, they would have seat belts.
With the big ones now?
The lodge buses are, by regulation, should not have seat belts by regulation.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't know that. I was wondering. Okay. And how are we doing with drivers?
We're doing great. We settled the contract, as you know, and based on our new rate, which is the highest definitely on the South Shore, probably including Boston as well. So we are attracting new drivers. We have 10 new drivers in the queue now. So we probably need another 10 and we'll be right back where we were pre-COVID, which is great.
Oh, good. So you're looking for 10 more?
We're always looking for drivers, drivers and monitors.
Somebody out there that's looking, paying attention, tell your friends, highest paid in the area, right?
It's a great job.
Yeah, good. Glad to hear it.
Thank you. Thank you for your support.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues for the public school items? Great, all right.
Thank you all.
Really appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right. So that's it for each of the sections, but are there any overall questions or comments from my colleagues on this, the particular order that's in finance right now? Counselor DeBona?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to, I want to thank, thank you for allowing each department to come up and go over the punchline, the punch, the different items that were in the budget that is asked for tonight. I want to thank the city for, for going around and seeing what we really needed rather than only wants and the needs and really coming back to the, to the city council with this appropriation. I think it's very important to get in front of these particular items. And as you can see, I, I've been through the capital improvement plan appropriations over the years and you wouldn't be coming in front of us unless you needed these things. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion to approve in committee. We don't need a second, but any other questions or comments from my colleagues, overall questions or comments from my colleagues before we move on? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. So with that, we're going to go ahead and close the Finance Committee meeting at 8:34 PM and reopen the City Council meeting. Madam Clerk, second item on the agenda, or number one, I should say.
2025-081, an appropriation for $2,611,994.96 for year-end transfers.
Okay, for the typical year-end transfers. Mr. Rock, I'll go to you first before I open it up.
Just briefly, Madam President, the, the rest of the items, almost all the items on the agenda, the traditional year-end closeouts. Director Mason, his team are here to answer any questions you have. I know he worked with Madam Auditor over the course of the last couple of days to get to a good place with these numbers, but I just want to give everyone a heads up that it, it looks long, but it's really just the traditional June wrap-up stuff that we do.
Sounds good. Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion for this item? Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor DeBona. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton. Seven members.
Okay, item passes. Number two on the agenda, please.
2025-082, an appropriation.
Motion to approve by Counselor DeBona. Do we have a second?
I have a second and then on the motion.
Yes, please. Go ahead, Counselor. I'm sorry. So we, did you make the motion?
He made the motion.
Oh, Counselor Harris. Sorry, I thought it was you. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, on the motion.
Uh, I, I, thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say, you know, Karen O'Toole, our administrator for the community preservation, and her staff has done a great job this year, particularly looking up items and, and getting back to the, to the, to the committee. So I just want to say, a, a, a shout out to, to Karen O'Toole for doing such a great job this particular year in the community preservation. Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, so we have a motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Second by Counselor DeBona. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton. Seven members.
Okay, item passes. Number three, please.
2025-083, appropriation.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Second by Counselor DeBona. Any questions or comments on this item? Counselor DeBona, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to say, in my 10th year as being the City Council Representative for the Community Preservation Committee, I just want to give a shout out to the committee for all their hard work, led by Larry LeUzo, our chairman, Cole Berry, John Brenahan, Connie Driscoll, Kristen Powers, Elaine O'Donnell, and Tony Ritchie. Some of them have been on for many, many years and all their hard work, the Community Preservation Committee going out to these different particular projects and taking looks at them on weekends at different times of the year. This appropriation, obviously, the Historical Preservation Fund, you know, the Open Space Fund, as well as the Recreation Projects Fund. Great year, a lot of great projects. Thank you for the detailed lists that we have in front of us tonight, that is in front of us. And I just want to thank the entire committee for, for working hard at this particular, these, these funded projects. So it's going to come a long way and, and I wish everybody that's approved of these projects to do a great job with, with the preservations. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton. Seven members.
Okay, item passes. Number four, please.
2025-084, an appropriation for $950,000.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Campbell. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton. Seven members.
Item passes. Thank you. Number five, please.
2025-085, an appropriation for $331,000.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor DeBona. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Seven members.
Item passes. Number six, please.
Number six, 2025-086, an appropriation for $1,600,000.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Seconded by Counselor Campbell. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Seven members.
Item passes. Number seven, please.
2025-087, an appropriation for $300,000.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Seconded by Counselor Campbell. Any questions or comments? Okay, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Seven members.
Item passes. Number eight, please.
Appropriation Mass General Act, Chapter 44, Section 53E 1/2, setting the limits of what may be expended.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Seconded by Counselor Campbell. Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Ash.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. What, what are the differences in these amounts as compared to last year, if any? If, Director Mason, thank you.
Good evening, Counsel.
Just appeared. This is right, right when I had a question about money.
It's hard for me to sneak around. I'm kind of like a draft.
Is there a uniform increase here across department? Can you walk me through what the spreadsheet actually is?
No, so there's one addition year-over-year, Counselor, and that would be the addition of a Furnaceburg Golf Course revolving fund for building maintenance. It's, I believe it's the third to the bottom on the sheet.
Okay.
Now, that addition, what's important, the Furnaceburg Golf Course generates a lot more revenue than the $100,000 cap. So as part of a special condition to that revolving fund, is anything over $100,000 in the fund automatically goes back to the general fund. So that's the only new addition. Every single member is the, the same year-over-year except the far right column, instead of saying through fiscal '25s, through fiscal '26.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Mason. Also, Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? Great, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you. Item passes. Number nine, please.
2025-089, an appropriation for $1,430,000.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any questions or comments? Okay, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you. Number nine, please, Madam Clerk.
Approve, 2025-089, appropriation for $1,430,272.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Seconded by Counselor Campbell. Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Seven members.
Thank you. Number 10, please.
Appropriation for $997,652 for sewer.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any questions or comments on this item? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton. Seven members.
Item passes. Number 11, please.
2025-091, an appropriation for $997,000.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any questions or comments on the item? Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Seven members.
Okay, item passes. Number 12, please.
2025-092, an appropriation for $3,400,000.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Item passes. Number 13, please.
Number 13, 2025-093, an appropriation for $1 million for more stabilization.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Seconded by Counselor DeBona. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Seven members.
Item passes. Number 14, please, Madam Clerk.
2025-094, order disposition of land, 51 Parker Street.
Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Excuse me, is that coming out? Do we put this into the ordinance?
So from my understanding, this does not require moving it into ordinance. No, and we can certainly have a discussion on it. I just need a motion first and then we can open it up for discussion. Thank you. So we have a motion to approve by Counselor Harris. We have a second, so we can open up for discussion. Counselor DeBona, thank you. Mr. Simmons, thank you for being here this evening. Any questions for Mr. Simmons on this item?
Shall I take a moment and explain? These two orders are quite related. Thank you, Madam President. Regrettably, both ward counselors are not here tonight. One of the orders is for property in Houss Neck and the other one is on Parker Street. I'll start with 094, which is a property located on Parker Street. That's just off of Granite Street and appropriately named as much of the land up there is granite ledge. And the property owner who lives at 51 Parker came forward looking to buy the city-owned lot that's next door to his lot. It's pretty much entirely granite ledge slab. And the property owner has some plans. He wants to try to fit a garage in on his property and with the addition of this land next door, he'll be able to do so. So he came forward last year toward the end of the summer to speak to the mayor's office. And we thought it might be, well, when it was given to me to review, desirable project, because if when it was given to me to review, desirable project, because if you know that neighborhood, Parker Street's very narrow, and getting more off-street parking would be a positive outcome. So, this particular individual lives in the home, is proposing to purchase the property, and he'd like to develop it with a garage, and he may put an accessory dwelling unit on the second floor of the garage, but he has to see how everything will work up there. So, the plan is, if this were to be approved tonight, that he would go forward with plans over the summer with an architect and develop the lot. I respectfully, on behalf of the executive branch, recommend that we go forward with this, because this individual's worked pretty hard on it. He understands his limits to what he can do. The council order is tailored, so it's a very limited development of a garage accessory to the existing home, and he could put an ADU there, which wouldn't be a bad thing, given the location here Quincy Center. The process we went through is we checked with the engineering department. They conduct a review, and then, working with the assessor's office, we come up with a value range. So, that's order twenty-five ninety-four, and then order number twenty-five ninety-five.
Sorry, Mr. Timmons, if we could just stick to ninety-four first, as that's the one that apparently has a motion to approve. So, if we could just discuss that, and then we'll keep you updated for the next one.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments from my colleagues on twenty twenty-five dash zero nine-four, fifty-one Parker Street? Okay, just before we move to it, I just have a quick question. This is not the first time that we've had, you know, sliver of properties that aren't developed by the city, given the size, that, you know, are abutting residents, and they just want to take it to be part of their property, right? I mean, I think I recall seeing these items in front of us before, where it's a fairly, again, straightforward process, sliver of land, right, owned by the city still, but just given the layout, right, it's really used for either leaving it as is or residents can sort of include it into their property.
You're correct, Counselor. If we were to do this on a more regular basis, we'd use bid processes and open it up to the neighborhood. But in both these occasions, that's why I was segueing to the next one, because they're very similarly related. This parcel of land that we're selling is basically undevelopable, but this property owner wants to try to do something. He's the only one, well, he and his wife, they're the only ones who could make any use of the property, and they can do everything without impacting the properties on the other side of the ledge. So, you're, you're correct that we've done it before, but it's pretty rare, because we limit it to occasions where the lots are only useful to one property owner.
That's what I thought. Okay, just wanted to make sure. No, thank you. Again, any other questions or thoughts? Yes, Counselor Harris, please.
And, and just to make it clear, they have to still go in front of the zoning board, and, am I correct? They, they don't have a free rein of being able to build whatever they want, size-wise, or...
No, they don't.
They still have to go in front of the zoning board, correct?
They do not, because this would be a by right. We're limiting in the council order. I understand your concern. I'm sorry, I didn't make this clear, but the council order really limits what can be done. It says a garage ancillary to the residential use, so.
Very good.
It might be a Taj Mahal of garages.
That's okay.
But that's as bad as it'll get.
That's great. Thank you.
Great question, Counselor Harris. Thank you. Any other questions or comments or thoughts? Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell. Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Six members.
Okay, item passes. Number fifteen, please. I'll just read the order.
Of course. Twenty twenty-five zero nine-five, disposition of land, thirty-one Spring Street.
Okay, I'm just seeking a motion so that we can have a discussion on this. Motion to approve, okay. Motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Harris. Okay, Mr. Timmons, if you could.
Thank you. This particular property is located at the end of Spring Street. The property owner, I had suggested to him that he not go forward with this, because he can essentially enjoy the land as he wishes, because he's it down that end of the street. But it's oceanfront property. The city of Quincy owns all the land and its own open space. They own the, I shouldn't say they, we, the city owns about six lots that have fifty-foot affrontage, and then go out. It's, it includes the beaches and flats in the area. So, in this particular instance, what this property owner is looking to do is buy the fifty-foot-wide lot of land right next door to his home to create a little buffer from the space next to him. It'll give him an ability to do a little more with his own lot if he cares to, because he'll now own this additional fifty-foot strip. But there can be no development on this particular fifty-foot strip. This one's restricted to a no development in the property's own open space.
Thank you. And I do see here it says expressly, there cannot be any development here of any kind of nature, so thank you for clarifying that. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this particular item? Okay, see, oh, Counselor Ash.
Thank you. Thank you, Solicitor Timmons. A quick question. If, if this lot is, is acquired with the purchase, and then this whole, this particular property owner, would, does he have to go and have the lots joined at some point? I.e., the lot that his home is presently on, and then this new lot that's being acquired?
They'll merge by operation of law. I mean, technically, if he were to sell, there might be some question. But the way this is laid out, it's all cookie-cutter lots, so I suspect that, based on how we identify this and everything, for the assessor's purposes, they'll merge at the registry. The lots will merge by operation of law. So, if he needs to do a new plan, he'll have to do so at his own expense.
Does this language survive that merger, though?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Great, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash. Counselor Campbell. Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Six members.
Okay, item passes. Thank you, Solicitor Timmons. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor.
Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Twenty twenty-four one fifty-seven, correction of municipal broadband project use of Chapter one forty-nine A, construction manager at-risk delivery method.
Thank you, and I just seek a motion and/or a second so that we can have a discussion on this item. Motion to approve. Okay, Counselor Harris. Second by Counselor DeBona. Mr. Walker, if you could just walk through this?
Sure. This is through Madam President. This is an order originally passed unanimously by this body in December. I believe this goes back to Counselor Kane and the administration's efforts to set up the municipal broadband network. We intended to apply for Chapter one forty-nine A, design-build. The order mentioned, the original order mentioned both design-build and construction manager at-risk. Upon review, the IG's office, which must approve our entry into the program, even though it's de minimis in nature, they requested us to change the language to eliminate reference to construction manager at-risk and just stick with design-build, even though technically they're the same thing.
Okay, so this is a housekeeping correction that we need to make on this item? Okay, thank you for walking through that. Any questions or comments from my colleagues on this item? I know President Kane has been spearheading this, and I know that he's not here today, but I'm sure we'll be very grateful that we're continuing to move this along very aggressively and proactively. So, with that, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash. Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine. Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton.
Yes.
Seven members.
Okay, item passes. Number seventeen, please.
Twenty twenty-five zero nine-six, a gift for fifty.
Motion to approve by Counselor Harris. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Campbell. Any questions or comments? Send a letter, thank you, of course. Thank you, Counselor Harris. Any questions or comments on this? No, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine. Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton. Seven members.
Okay, item passes. Moving on to the approval of previous meeting minutes of June second. Do I have a motion to approve by Counselor DeBona? Seconded by Counselor Campbell. Any questions on the meeting minutes? No? Okay, all those in favor? Any opposed? Alright, the meeting's passed. Meeting minutes passed. Thank you. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city boards. Madam Clerk, please.
Yes. I do have a traffic request to refer to Ordinance Committee for Advertising, Ward Six, Counselor Harris, at Handicap Parking at three oh-one Billing Street, and a utility, utility request to refer to Public Works Committee for Schedule on Advertising, grant a location, National Grid Verizon, Washington Street at Southern Ottery and Beacon Street.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Unfinished business and proceeding meeting. Seeing none, reports of committees? Counselor DeBona, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Like to take something out of the Ordinance Committee. Couple items that were passed and positive recommendation. Two thousand twenty-five dash zero five-eight, ordinance amending zone, zoning section eight-point-five transit-oriented districts. We had a positive recommendation, so motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion to approve. Second by Counselor Devine. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton. Seven members.
Okay, item passes.
Also, positive recommendation on two thousand twenty-five dash zero six-eight order, amending housing development zone and plan H-DIP. We had positive recommendation, so motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counselor DeBona. Seconded by Counselor Harris. Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.
Yes.
Counselor Liang.
Yes.
Counselor Minton. Seven members.
Thank you. And Counselor DeBona, I'll stay with you for finance?
Finance. So, Finance Committee, you might have passed. We had a positive recommendation in, in the Finance Committee for two thousand twenty-five dash zero seven-five earlier tonight, appropriation of eight-point-two-five million dollars for equipment and capital improvements, the CIP plan, so motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Second by Counselor Campbell. Any questions or comments on this item? No. Okay, Madam Clerk, could you call the roll?
Counselor Ash.
Yes.
Counselor Campbell.
Yes.
Counselor Devine.
Yes.
Counselor DeBona.
Yes.
Counselor Harris.